Evening, everybody. I'd like to start this Fremont City Council meeting by saying please rise for a moment of silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
The people of which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Welcome, everybody, to the regular meeting of Fremont City Council on this sixth day of May 2021. Roll call, please.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. We?
Here.
We?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Addy? Jenny?
Here.
Bauder? Reese?
Here.
Leibl.
Council has received a journal of the minutes of the previous meeting. Are there any additions or corrections?
Madam President Pro Tem, the only thing I noticed is that the minutes, I believe there is a repeat at the end of the minute about voting to adjourn. I don't have them in front of me, but that's the only thing I noticed. There was a repeat of.
I saw the same thing, Justin.
Yeah, I see that stuff. You guys can always give me a call before the meeting, and it can be fixed before here.
Okay. I apologize. That's just the only thing I noticed.
And if everybody is in agreement, the minutes will stand as approved and as written and received with that correction being made. There are seven items on tonight's agenda. This council wished to remove any item from the agenda. This council wished to add an item to the agenda. The agenda is set. To start the meeting this evening, we will be having a presentation from TMA-COG, an organization based out of Toledo that we have been a member of for many years. Today, making the, or tonight, making the presentation will be the president of TMA-COG, Mr. Tim Brown. Gilda Mitchell is working with TMA-COG, and then Kari Gerwin is also working with TMA-COG. So they will make their presentations. You may have the screen now. Mr. Brown?
All right. Well, thank you, Madam President Pro Tem. It's nice to see you and nice to see all of you. We want to start off by just simply saying thank you for your membership. Thank you for your support. Thank you for your involvement in TMA-COG. We see Angie representing the city of Fremont frequently at the TMA-COG table when we're able to be together. But like you, we've been meeting via teleconference for now over a year, and that will probably continue for a little while longer as we slowly start to walk back into normalcy. So we're looking forward to seeing you all in person at some point in the future. I just want to say thanks for your service and what you do. I spent 20 years in elective office in Wood County before moving to TMA-COG. And I tell my friends and family and those prior constituents who ask if I like it, and I tell them, I love it. Public services, it doesn't get any easier, but public service at the local level still works. In spite of the, what we see at the national level sometimes can be very frustrating, but local government works. It's the closest to the people. And at TMA-COG, you know, we try to assemble folks from all over the region to talk about our shared challenges, the assets we have, and the ways that we can work together. So I'm very proud to tell folks, working at the local level is something that we can all be very proud of because getting the job done for people at the local level. It may not be front page news and glamorous all the time, but it's very important to our lives, as we'll hear from Kari Gerwin in a moment, who will give you a little bit of a snapshot as to what we're doing on water quality issues impacting Lake Erie and the watershed that we share. So I'm going to stop there. I know Gilda's got a couple of things she'd like to say before we share a screen and turn it over to Kari.
I just want to echo what Tim said. Thank you so much for having us be present at your meeting tonight. The city of Fremont has been a member of TMA-COG since 1974, so we are grateful for your membership and your partnership with TMA-COG. You guys have been heavily involved with us, and we appreciate that. Really quickly, I just want to let you know, being a member of TMA-COG, you are able to be involved in a lot of things that we are doing. We have our summer caucus with state lawmakers that are, is coming up. That will be the first week of August, so it's August the 3rd through the 5th. So we encourage you as a member of TMA-COG to join us with our summer caucus. It'll be by teleconference, so it'll be basically how this format is set up. So you can go to our new website at tma-cog.org and go to events and then sign up for our summer caucus with state lawmakers, and we would love to see your faces. But I don't want to take up too much time because I want to allow Kari to have some time to give her presentation. So if you have any questions about TMA-COG and about your membership, please feel free to contact me at any time, but I'm going to turn it over to Kari Gerwin. She is the Director of Water Quality, and she's going to give you an update. Kari?
Okay, it looks like the unmute button is a different location on each of the virtual platforms, but I have found it. Are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Wonderful. And I am going to enlarge my presentation. All right, that's, that's better. In fact, I think, let me change my settings very quickly. Okay, that looks better, doesn't it? All right, as Gilda and Tim introduced me, my name is Kari Gerwin. I am the Director of Water Quality Planning at TMA-COG. I've been with TMA-COG since 2012, and I actually started with TMA-COG as a stormwater planner, and I have been leading our water quality department for the last three years now, after the retirement of our long-term Vice President, Kurt Erickson. So many of you may have known him and worked with him. I'd like to talk today just generally about our water quality program and really highlight a few areas where we have worked with the city of Fremont and areas where you can, you can be involved. So our water quality program has been around since the 1970s, and it really was developed in response to Clean Water Act requirement. And these were requirements for regional sewer planning out of Section 208 of the Clean Water Act. But in the 40-plus years of the program, we have really expanded to meet our members' needs. And we expanded into stormwater management. We also look at public water supply. We've worked heavily in watershed coordination over the years. And more recently, we've begun working more intentionally with agricultural stakeholders and all of our members in water quality policy. So as I mentioned, really at the core of a lot of the work that we do is our 208 planning. So this is our regional wastewater and sewer planning, and we work closely with the city of Fremont and Sandusky County, as well as our, the other three counties in our planning area, and all of the wastewater service providers in the planning area. And the purpose of this planning is to define the sewer service areas, identify any potential overlap, and eliminate that overlap, and to make sure that federal and state funds are allocated efficiently throughout our planning area for sewer improvements. So the shot I have up here on the screen is of Fremont's sewer, sewer service area, as well as a couple others in the county. Now, we work very closely with Superintendent Jeff Lamson. He's the superintendent of the wastewater plant or the water reclamation facility. And we work very closely with him on 208 planning for the city of Fremont. And he also happens to be the long-term vice chair of our wastewater committee. So he's been very involved with our, with our water quality program and has really been a fantastic leader in the area of wastewater. Other work that we do in the wastewater arena is in identifying areas that are unsuared and that really do need sewer service in order to meet the population demands in these areas. So we do analytical work to determine what the critical sewage areas are, and we work closely with the health departments in determining these. Another focus area that, that really deals with permit requirements is the stormwater program. In 2003, TMA-COG members chose to form the Stormwater Coalition, and this is a separate dues assessment to be a part of the Stormwater Coalition. And what, what we do with the Stormwater Coalition is we offer assistance in meeting the permit requirements of the stormwater management program. This is a separate NPDES permit through Ohio EPA. And local governments like Fremont, City of Toledo, and all the other local governments in, in the urbanized area have certain requirements that they have to meet in order to manage their stormwater program. These include education and outreach, managing construction site runoff, making sure that long-term, long-term stormwater management practices are functioning as they should, detecting illicit discharges, and preventing pollution from municipal operations. As I mentioned, Fremont is a regulated MS4, so the city does have a permit through Ohio EPA. The city is currently not a member of the Stormwater Coalition, but we welcome you to attend any of our meetings. Welcome your stormwater staff to attend any of our meetings and would certainly welcome your membership in the Stormwater Coalition as well. Another area that really does cross over all of our programs in the water quality program is with education opportunities for our members. We have a stormwater workshop. Actually, it's a webinar that we've got planned for this fall that will help our members to meet some of their stormwater permit requirements and really understand what's involved with stormwater pollution prevention plan review. This is a process that is part of site plan review for development, and there are Ohio EPA requirements for how those reviews are conducted. So keep an eye open for emails about that workshop. We will be probably starting to advertise at the, probably mid-September or so. We also are planning some webinars for water and wastewater operators. This is a program that TMA-COG has been offering for the past several years. As you're probably aware, operators of water and wastewater systems have requirements for continuing education in order to maintain their licensing. So we help our members and their staff to receive those education credits through these workshops. So again, because of COVID precautions, we will be offering this again this year as a webinar series, and that will take place over three days in July. And finally, I would like to talk about the work that we've done more recently in water quality policy. There, I'm sure all of you are very much aware with, of the water quality issues in the region, being right on Sandusky River and being so close to the lake. In 2014, with the Do Not Drink Advisory that the city of Toledo's customers were under, our members really did decide that it was time to take a closer look at the policies underlying the decision-making that's made regarding water quality. So with our policy document, the Agenda for Lake Erie, we hope to express our regions and our members' voice for all of our water quality priorities. And we hope that this document will be a foundation for regional advocacy on behalf of Lake Erie. Streams so selves that provide these important and entirely essential water and sewer services. And we've been using the Agenda for Lake Erie to engage state and federal legislators. We've also been using it to provide comments as changes come out to various permits and other rulemaking at the state level. Now, the Agenda for Lake Erie is broken down into several topical areas that are listed here. We cover everything from the H2Ohio program. We make recommendations on how our members believe that those funds should be spent and the accountability that should come along with those. And then we also make recommendations for agriculture and all of our other programmatic areas. And the Agenda for Lake Erie is widely supported by our members, of course. This is a consensus document, and it has approved through our various water quality committees and also up through our executive committee and Board of Trustees. We also have pretty wide support from our, from stakeholders in the region. And here is just a handful of our stakeholders. But we are continuing to engage our stakeholders to get their support for this. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I'll leave my slide up here a little bit longer so that you can jot down my
Councilwoman, I'm not sure how much time you have for us. We'd be happy to answer questions. I just want to mention a couple of things. Sandusky County is outside the federally defined planning area where we do transportation planning. But before the pandemic started, I had a chance to come over and meet with the Sandusky County Commissioners about the high fatality area that you have there in Fremont. And so, you know, when you have issues of a transportation nature and you're a member, even though you may be outside of our federally defined planning area, we'll still support you with ODOT to get those projects done. And we did that. I also want to mention, and you know, sometimes people scratch their heads when I tell them that TMA-COG has invested money in supporting a bypass in the Delaware area. And you might ask yourself, what interest do we have in a bypass in the Delaware, Ohio area just north of Columbus? And the answer to that is this. Northwest Ohio is the only major metropolitan area of our state that doesn't have direct, unfettered highway access to the interior of the state. It limits us as a freight corridor. It hinders Northwest Ohio's economic development capabilities because we don't have a dedicated corridor. So we got the attention of Governor DeWine, and I have to tell you, he's been extremely supportive of looking at this issue. As you know, for those of you who've traveled to Columbus, once you hit North Delaware County, we have to wade through now 44 traffic lights before we even reach the outer belt of Columbus, 270. That is a huge hindrance to our ability to quickly and speedily reach the interior and the capital of our state. It hinders Northwest Ohio, and we believe that that issue needs to be addressed. The governor has been wholeheartedly supportive of our efforts on behalf of our region to try to get that matter addressed. So we've put $250,000 into a study, Columbus. Our sister organization, Morpsy, put in another $250,000, and ODOT matched us with $500,000. And they announced just a couple of months ago that they are going to kick off a study to look at what options we have to streamline a limited access highway that either will go west or east, north of Delaware, and more quickly connect us to the highway system into Columbus. So with that, though, and Kari's update and our transportation update, let us stop and see what questions you have for us in the remaining time we have with you tonight.
I do have a question. Can you hear me, Tim?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm Denny Addy, City Council. I guess this is kind of off, off the sheet, but it has a little bit of smidgen to do with transportation and a smidgen to do with water quality. I know one of the complaints a lot of the boaters have in our area is Lake, or Sandusky River. It needs dredging. Not only for them to get into the bay and the lake, and I know I've talked to ODNR briefly, and I think there's just a little extra push we need or a little extra help or a study. I don't know if that would come under TMA-COG's umbrella or not.
Oh, it, it most definitely can. And this is how those things happen, is when one of our members brings something to our attention. And, and Kari may have something to add to this, but yeah, if we can, Councilman, get some additional details from you about that. Our department has contacts that we work with rather closely at the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. And so we'd be happy to reach out and, and advocate on your behalf. If there is a dredging issue that you're pushing for, let us get some details from you if we can. And we'd be happy to do that. Kari, is there anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I'll just reiterate our working relationship with ODNR through the Scenic Rivers Program. We are connected with the Scenic Rivers Manager for both the Sandusky and the Mommy River. Her name is Christina Coopley. And I'm happy to pass this along to her and see what sort of resources there may be out there.
And you know, too, and this, this has been a problem even before our dam was removed. So you know, some people say, oh, yeah, because of the dam and the soap. But no, this has been a problem for quite a while. And, you know, back in the days, we actually used to have barges and things come up for what we called our sand docks. And they would dredge the river. And we're going back, as you can see, I'm a little bit, as somebody said the other, other day, I'm in the wisdom class of people without saying that I'm old.
I love it.
The wisdom class. You're kind of, the wisdom. So anyway, but something like that. I just think, you know, I've talked to boaters and I've been out on boats. If it gets a little too sluggish and you got a boat in front of you going slow, and then all of a sudden you start to see the mud cheering up. So any help we could get there, that would be great, you know, contact me through City Council, whatever. Anything I can do and what you guys could do would be greatly appreciated.
Happy to do it. Thank you for bringing it up. And if you've passed any resolutions or sent any correspondence to the state, copy us on it, but otherwise, we can absolutely reach out on your behalf.
And I'm sure Angie can give me all the contact information for you, Tim, and whoever would be involved. So I do appreciate the openness.
You're welcome.
I'd like to thank Mr. Brown and TMA-COG for coming to our meeting tonight. It's been very informative.
You're very welcome. And just as a reminder, all of our meetings are public. Your members, you have the right to sit in on any meeting that we have. We've just redesigned our website. It's very simply www.tma-cog.org, and it lists all of our public meetings, councils, committees. You're welcome to get involved in any one of them, or if you'd like, just to sit in. And I'm going to pick on Kari here for one quick second because I know you've got a full agenda. But Kari, if you wouldn't mind sharing with them some of the highlights of Monday's Water Quality Council agenda. The people you have coming in and presenting, the subject matter is very interesting. And sometimes folks on our Transportation Council will just jump in a meeting on the other side of the aisle just to listen in to the elected officials and some of the people we get. So Kari, if you don't mind, share with them just quickly what's going on on Monday. And then Angie, you're welcome to give us the hook anytime you need to, to keep your meeting going.
So we do have a Water Quality Council meeting on Monday, and some of what we will be looking at really does get to the core of what the council does, and that is offer policy recommendations and also provide TMA-COG's support for good policies. So Senator Gavron will be presenting Senate Joint Resolution 2, which is a bonding issue for clean water and for a clean water initiative. I believe that's a $1 billion bond issue over 10 years. So she will be presenting on that. And this will give our members the opportunity to ask questions, ask what sort of accountability measures are worked into that. We will also have a request by the waterkeeper, the Lake Erie waterkeeper, to provide a resolution of support for a proposed executive order to President Biden to take executive action on Lake Erie. So the waterkeeper will be presenting this, and our committee will be asked to provide support for that. And then finally, we will have a, an attorney for Lucas County presenting on, presenting an update on the Lucas County lawsuit against US EPA regarding Lake Erie that you've probably heard about in the news a bit. We'll be giving a little bit of a background, but really talking about and focusing on the need for intergovernmental cooperation in addressing Lake Erie's issues as opposed to litigating the matter. So it should be a very, very full and lively agenda. We're looking forward to a lot of discussion. And I would welcome all of you to join us for that meeting.
Anything else?
Tim, how are you?
Good.
This is Mayor Sanchez. I just wanted to say hello.
Thank you. It's good to see you again.
Yeah, you too. I just want to say thank you to, to you and Kari for coming on tonight. And just say hello. And I echo what Councilman Addy said. We have had some conversations recently in reference to the Sandusky River and do have some plans to start having some conversations with ODNR to discuss dredging options. We, we, we think there's a, there's a huge opportunity to take advantage of the Sandusky River there with the dam coming out and possibly being able to utilize that for some type of water recreational use, just as, as the river comes into, into town here.
Great.
So I'll reach out to you as well, and maybe Councilman Addy and myself can, can champion that together and try to start those conversations.
Well, very happy to work with you on it. And again, honored by your membership and on behalf of Kari and Gilda and myself, we just want to say thank you for the partnership, the ability to communicate, work together where we can, and collaborate. That's what it should be all about at this level of government. So thank you.
Yep, absolutely. You have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Good to see you all.
Good to see you.
Thank you. Angie, you're on mute. We can't hear you.
Oh, my gosh. No wonder nobody heard me. I didn't do it. Anyhow. Would our council clerk, Mrs. Martin, start with our first reading, the first item?
Third reading of the ordinance in acting new chapter 1156 entitled illicit discharge and illegal connection control to Part 11, Planning and Zoning Code, Title III, zoning ordinance section of the codified ordinances of the city of Fremont declaring an emergency.
I move for adoption.
My second.
It has been moved for adoption by Mrs. Reese, seconded by Mr. Addy. Roll call, please.
We?
Yes.
Yes.
Addy?
Yeah.
Reese?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
That has been passed by a vote of five to zero. The next item on the agenda.
Third reading of the ordinance to repeal Chapter 924 entitled Stormwater Management and to replace it with Chapter 1155 entitled Stormwater Management in Part 11, Planning and Zoning Code, Title III, zoning ordinances of the codified ordinances of the city of Fremont declaring an emergency.
I move for adoption.
I second the motion. It has been moved by, moved for adoption by Denny Addy, seconded by Angie Reese. Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Addy?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
We?
Yes.
We?
Yes.
That has been passed by a vote of five to zero. Thank you. The next reading. The next reading is item number three. Mrs. Martin.
First reading of an ordinance approving the editing and the inclusion of certain ordinances as part of the various component codes of the Codified Ordinances of Fremont, Ohio, and to amend or enact sections of the General Offenses Code to conform to enactments with the General Assembly.
That will constitute the first reading. Item number four.
First reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 941 Parks and Playground Code, Section 941.03D, Rules and Regulations of the Parks and Playground of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Fremont Declaring an Emergency.
That will constitute the first reading. Item number five.
First reading of a resolution authorizing the approval and issuance of a warrant for payment of $12,409.01 to public entities pools of Ohio declaring an emergency.
Thank you. That will constitute the first reading on that item. Item number six.
First reading of an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of not to exceed $1,085,000.01 of notes in anticipation of issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying a portion of the cost of the improvement to Garrison Street from Washington Street to South Front Street, including whitening, pavement replacement, replacing curb catch basins and water lines as designated in the plans approved or to be approved by council and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. That will constitute the first reading. The next item, number seven, Mrs. Martin.
First reading of a resolution authorizing here to enter into a revolving loan fund agreement with Lee Ann Gibson, VDA, LBC Salon LLC and declaring an emergency.
That constitutes the first reading for that item. Do we, does anybody want to give a committee report, Mr. Smith?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Sleek?
I have nothing at this time. Thank you, Madam President, pro temp.
Mrs. Reese?
Likewise, I have nothing to report this evening. Thank you, Madam President.
And I don't have anything to say either. Any other reports that you might have or comments by the elected official mayor Sanchez?
Madam President, excuse me, Madam President, I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Malley?
I have nothing, Madam President, pro temp. Thank you.
Mr. Frost?
No, ma'am. I have nothing this evening.
Any other comments?
I'd like to make one quick comment, if I could, Madam.
Okay.
Does everybody know that we planted down at Wayne Street Cemetery for memorial to the veterans that are there, which are 60 veterans and most dead on both levels of the cemetery. But we're going to be doing this this Saturday, Saturday the 14th, at 10:00 a.m. And I'm excited to say that not only is the support of UTE moms for donating mulch and for Lowe's helping donate flowers. But this year, we're going to have Clyde F. F. A. in 2012 with America. About 10 of them come over to the community. Let's see them evolve if they want to stop. And that's the only thing I really wanted to kind of throw in there.
Okay. Hope to see a lot of you out there on the 14th, that Saturday.
15th.
Okay, the 15th, you'll have it your way. Okay, so if there aren't any, anything else that we have?
Madam President.
Yeah.
Madam President, pro temp, I'd like to thank the voters for supporting the school of hope on the senior citizen levy that was on the ballot this past Tuesday. And Denny, good job in getting the Clyde F. F. A. I work at Clyde High School. They're very excited about coming over and helping the neighbor community. So that's a good thing.
Cool thing.
So, thank you.
Look forward to that. Is there another, any other business to conduct?
Madam Elder? I do have one quick question for Mr. Ross. The, the new crosswalks at the bridge on Houston Avenue are fantastic. And I really want to thank everyone who got the crockery ready in time for fishing season. But I think that if we could have a little bit of clarification on the apple crossing, because the lights at Blank aren't red. So I saw some children trying to cross the other day and don't know if drivers are understanding if they're supposed to completely stop or take caution. And these children were halfway across the street and got stuck in traffic. So is that a complete stop when the light is flashing? Or is it just caution for the, for the cars? And pedestrians still have to stop for cars?
I only get about half of what you said. I've got a lot of feedback on my end for some reason. Maybe somebody's not copying it properly or something. And I, I believe what you're asking is the pedestrians stoplight at the bridge where the new bike trail is put in? If you're supposed to stop completely at them, both lights are flashing. My answer is this, the pedestrians always have the right of way. So it is, it is, is your responsibility as a driver to make sure that that crosswalk is clear both ways and nobody's approaching the crosswalk. So my answer to you is that legally, no, you don't have to come to a complete stop as long as you are 100% sure that it's clear. My advice would be yes, come to a complete stop and make sure that it's clear. I think it's going to take a little time for people to get used to because it's the first time we've had something like this in the city. So I appreciate the question. And hopefully, some other council members can maybe bring that up to people in their prospective wards, and we can pay a little bit closer attention to that crosswalk. If I didn't answer your question, I'll call me tomorrow or something. Like I said, I got a ton of feedback on my end.
Yeah, there is a lot of feedback. I think there are a lot of mic open, but you did answer the question. I just think that I agree with you. It is an awareness issue for drivers. So thank you.
Any other comments? Could I hear a motion for adjournment?
I move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Mr. Smith votes to adjourn. Mrs. Reese seconds that motion. Roll call, please.
Addy.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
We.
Yes.
Sleek.
Yes.
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.